Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 22nd, 2021, meeting of the Winchester Select Board. My name is Michael Benton Court. I serve as Chair. Joining me this evening are members of the Select Board, Mariano Golubov, Amy Shapiro, and Select Board Vice Chair Susan Vedicchio. We are going to, Town Manager Lisa Wong is here as well, and multiple members of the community. We're going to jump right over to the appointment for Daniel O'Connell to the Chief of Police, and I think he's over with Windcam now. So if Windcam is there and available, feel free to take it away, and then we'll come back to the Select Board after that because we're using the same feed.
Come right up. Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Lannan, Town Clerk, and we're going to swear in our new police chief. Do you, Daniel J. O'Connell, solemnly affirm that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and support the Constitution thereof?
I do.
Do you, Daniel J. O'Connell, solemnly affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as Police Chief of the Town of Winchester, according to the best of your abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution, the laws of this Commonwealth, and the Charter and bylaws of the Town of Winchester?
I do.
All right, Daniel, you can sign right here. Congratulations. We will ask his wife, Mrs. O'Connell, to come up to the podium and pin his badge on him.
Thank you. I just want to thank you to Town Manager Lisa Wong for appointing me to this position and giving me this opportunity as Chief. I'm really honored by the position. I'd also like to thank the Board for affirming her selection. You know, when I first started at the Police Department, I had shiny new boots. I walked into my first roll call, and there was a guy there with nice, fresh chevrons on his shirt, and his name was Peter McDonald. I think you all know him. I didn't know it then, but I was probably one of the luckiest police officers in the town to be working underneath Peter. Peter was my sergeant. He was my mentor. Peter made lieutenant, and I took his sergeant's position underneath him, still working for him, still learning from him. Peter made lieutenant in charge, and I once again got promoted to detective lieutenant, working under him, learning from him. Peter made chief, and then chief, then he made me his second-in-command, and once again, I've learned so much from him. But I really just wanted to give a big thank you to Peter McDonald because you don't just get to be Police Chief without some support and guidance, and Peter did give me that. Well, thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to my friends for all the support they've given me. I'd like to say thank you to the community. We've had a tough year, and there's been a lot of ups and downs, more downs this past year, and it really, I speak for the whole department when I say, the letters that have been sent, the food that's been sent, the food that's been sent, and the copy. It really has. Just the outreach to us has been great. We really do appreciate it. But once again, you don't get to be in this position that I am with this opportunity through just hard work alone, and that's where I have to thank my family and my wife Jennifer for all the time she put up with. Three o'clock phone calls at night, missing birthday parties, making three hours of a holiday. I know it's been a lot, but you don't get to where you are without the support, and I truly appreciate that. I love you guys for that. I thank you for that. Finally, to the Police Department and the community, I'm ready for the challenge. Peter McDonald, as like I had said prior, had done a lot of work with accreditation. We've gone through three accreditations now. We've been accredited for close to a decade. We have our fourth accreditation coming up very soon, and we should be reaccredited by the new fiscal year in July. The new Criminal Justice Reform Bill that was just passed also has a lot of new changes, regulations, a lot of new things for the Police Department that are coming down the road, most of them right around the new fiscal year. So we're going to be prepared for those. We're going to be ready for those, and along with all the other training that we have to do. In closing, I'd just like to say thank you once again to the Town Manager Lisa Wong, to the Board, to the community, my friends, and mostly my family. Thank you very much.
I'd just say, Mary, thank you for volunteering. It's good to get some new people on various boards and committees, and it sounds like you're more than qualified, so I'm grateful that you're willing to put in the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And, you know, we've seen a lot of work coming out of the Design Review Committee in the past several months because of all the activity in the Senate Business District. So it's great to have that committee full and active, and really great to have artists on the committee as well. So we appreciate your engagement there. So thank you very much. So unless there are other questions or comments, then I'll take a motion to appoint Mary Grassi to the Design Review Committee, term to expire December 31st, 2022.
So I move that we appoint Mary Grassi to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Thank you so much, Mary, and we look forward to hearing from you on Design Review Committee.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care. There are two additional reappointments, one for the Heritage District Commission and one for the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee because they're reappointments. We won't do interviews, but we certainly appreciate all the hard work and commitment from these residents. So I'll take a motion to appoint.
Okay. So I move that we reappoint John Clemson to the Heritage District Commission for a term to expire July 15th, 2022. And, okay.
One at a time, I guess. Yeah. All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero.
And I move that we reappoint Andrew Kelly to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Windcam, how are you doing over there? We're working through our agenda, but we don't want to tie you up if the Chief of Police is there. I'm not sure if he got caught speeding on his way over there or not, or what's happening, but we're ready.
Yeah, Mike Davis, Davis working on it. From their end, they think that we can see their feet, and we can't. So we'll work on that. But we do have other people here, including Angel from the MBTA.
Sure. Okay, so they're getting that kind of time. Okay. We'll start at our number one business item there, MBTA project update. So we'll take Angel Donnie Rodriguez. If he can be elevated to the panel. Hey, Angel, Mike Benton Court, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman.
So just wanted to hear an update and where we are. I know that things have kind of moved forward and then a little bit backward, and just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. As I've said in the past, we appreciate all the work that you and your team have done to push the project forward, but we want to make sure that the impact on the community is as minimal as possible because we've been hearing, I think there's a lot of anxiety from business owners and residents in the town center. So I'm happy to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to your members and to the public. Thank you for having me. So we've, we met with the delegation last week. We paraded a previous tomorrow. Tomorrow, we'll be having a public meeting, which will summarize demolition of the demo work that needs to get accomplished for the Winchester Center Station, and then also previewing what the, what the project is going to look like in the fall. As you mentioned, there were some things that, some setbacks that we need, that we need to, that we need to deal with, and we are working through that, and we're going to be working, we're going to be working with Lisa, the Town Manager, and other folks. And so we'll be presenting tomorrow some of, some mitigation factors or things that we're looking to try and alleviate some of the concerns from the community based on feedback we got from that. And I don't know, I don't know how much detail you'd like me to get into, but without giving too much of a preview for tomorrow's meeting because folks will be there tomorrow, but I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the project.
Yeah, thanks, Angel. I think just a brief preview of the kind of timeline there and what working is. I think that we had approved in our last meeting kind of a license to do work for eight or so, eight to 10 weeks or so, and that was extended, and we were hoping, I think, that there would be some savings on the overall timeline, but if you could just speak to those two issues, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm happy to get into that. So as you, as you mentioned, we, a couple of weeks ago, you guys, the Board had given us approval for, I believe it was the middle of April, for eight to 10 weeks roughly, that is what we estimated regarding demolition. Right now, we're, we, based on what we, some setbacks that we've had, either with weather, through the couple of storms that we, that we had, and some, and going back with the engineering team, we anticipate that we will need till the end, the very latest, the end of May. So just to be very specific here, that we envisioned that the demolition work will be completed by the middle of May with final, essentially all of the materials needed for the project to be taken out of the site, or needed for the demo by the end of May. So the demo would be essentially needed for an extra month, but to clean up the site and to be completely off-site for folks, we would need until about the end of May. So that's, that's the new timeline that, that the team will be seeking, and obviously, we don't expect a vote today, but we're, I'm happy to come back during your next meeting on the 8th of the 22nd to flush out more questions, and that, that is the plan that the team has at the moment.
Okay, thanks, Angel. One thing that I did want to talk about, and this may be something that you can talk about the meeting tomorrow and come back to us on the 8th, is maybe just some financial partnership on evaluating the parking in the town center. So it's been really difficult lately, and what we're going to end up doing is doing a parking study there to evaluate not just safety, but different signage and really how to control parking. That's, and as you know, they're taking away Liar Way Road for a period of time for laydown, and we're not talking big money here. We just need some professional assistance on it. So we would appreciate support from the MBTA if that's, if that's possible.
Yeah, and I'm happy to chat with, with Lisa and you offline to just to get more details about that, and I'm happy to see what we can do to try and be helpful.
Thank you. Questions from members of the Board? We don't want to let them off too easy, though.
Yeah. I was bracing.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking that the public is probably interested to hear what the demolition is going to entail, you know, what, what's coming down, how that whole process will work, you know, whether it's going to start at one end or the other, what, you know, what part of the downtown is going to be impacted when, that sort of, you know, just what to expect, I think.
Yeah, and what I can do with, with the Chairman's permission, and I'm happy, I can preview the presentation for you guys tomorrow, but we, we will send you guys the presentation once it's complete. The team's in the midst of finalizing that now, and I'm happy to share that so you have an idea, but we'll get into more details about that tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Angel, I may have missed this, but when is, when is the demolition going to start? You said the end of May it'll be done. When are they, are they still eight to 10 weeks?
So they've been doing, they've been doing work there now, the hard construction. To be honest, I don't know that off the top of my head at the moment, but I would, but I would suspect that it'll be soon, but they've already been on site doing work and taking, and taking down some things. But the hard stuff, the things that I think people will want to, will want to, things that people will come, will come to complain about, noise, that type of stuff, I think that's, I think we're a little bit aways, I think, at the moment.
Okay, and I probably should know this, but there's, is there a time restriction? Like, when, when do the workers start in the morning? Because I know there was one morning where it seems things started right during middle school drop-off, and it became a little chaotic. That was probably one of the early days, probably one of the first days of the project, but what, what time are they thinking about starting this type of work?
My understanding is 7:00 AM.
Okay. Okay. So we'll probably want to at least consider some of that if they're going to start at 7:00 AM with the drop-off in school.
And I'll preview this now. I mean, and again, like I said, we'll get into more details tomorrow, but one of the things that we're going to be doing around mitigation is we are going to be establishing a hotline for folks that'll be monitored. So those types of complaints will be able to come in, and we'll be able to monitor that. In addition to that, we'll be, without giving too much, the other, some of the other things we'll be presenting tomorrow, we'll be doing a, a regular update letter to folks, new email letter, to keep them updated about the things that we're doing.
I think that's great. I think if we can get ahead of the 7:00 AM, I think that that's going to be important because that's going to be a day-to-day struggle for, for folks who are trying to get to particularly the middle school, but.
You just have to drop your kids off at 6:30 and just, just wait, you know. But yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a good, good question, and certainly, maybe over the summer, there's more opportunities when, when school is out to increase those times as well. But we'll, we'll be happy to have a conversation about that. Any other questions for Angel while he's here? Well, thank you, and we'll catch up with you tomorrow then, sounds like.
Sounds, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Angel.
Thanks, Angel.
And Lisa, I'm not sure if you're on the horn with Windcam over there, but just, I'm just going to keep moving here.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I have bad news. They're not able to make the connection. So we still obviously need to proceed with the appointment tonight.
So can they just sign on in a laptop and just do without, I mean, we can let them in as a, as a, as a panelist, you know, even if it's not all the fancy stuff?
Yeah, so they actually, so they could see everything on their end. So they actually, when, when you cited the appointment, they actually just went ahead with the swearing-in, thinking that we could see them because they could see us.
Oh, okay.
And they have left the studio.
Oh, they, oh, okay. Well, that's helpful information. Then here, I'm just kind of stalling a little bit, not realizing that they're all cracking champagne and having a party, and we're, all right, good. Well, congratulations to Daniel O'Connell being appointed the Chief of Police, and.
But we still actually need to do the appointment.
Yep, we're going to do it right now. Yep, so we'll take a motion to appoint Daniel O'Connell to the Chief of Police, the Police Department.
And waive the 15-day appointment period.
I don't know. I feel like we should make him wait now, after all of this, and waive the 15-day appointment period as well. So we'll take that motion.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Daniel O'Connell to Chief of Police in Winchester Police Department, and also waive the 15-day effectiveness waiting period.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero, and best of luck to our new Chief Police, Daniel O'Connell, and we'll hear more from him soon. So we're excited about this appointment. A great opportunity for the town, and he's been really a great officer for us for many years. So thank you. Best of luck. Next agenda item, we'll just keep on moving through. So is Agenda Item Two is part of our packet. There was some information on the Winchester non-citizen voting privileges. It was a request from the Network for Social Justice and some residents for us to consider making some changes, and I see some members of the network here. I'm not sure who is going to be speaking, but we'll start maybe with Karen Hirschfeld. If we can let Karen in just to give us some background, and also just to let, and Wei Han as well, if we can let Wei in, and just to kind of explain where the Select Board is on it. It's our first time discussing this, so we wouldn't be voting to move it forward now. It really would be something we probably would bring before town meeting in the fall that would be in effect essentially for the following election period, so really almost a year from now. But, hi Wei, hey Karen, how are you?
Great. Thank you so much. I am going to pass it over to Wei. We decided that he would be the primary spokesperson. Is he on the call?
Fantastic. Hey Wei, how are you?
Hey, good. Hi. Thank you very much. Yeah, Winchester's residents who are now U.S. citizens are currently not permitted to vote in our local elections, and nonetheless, many of them, you know, civically engaged in Winchester. I know several people that are serving in the appointed board such as Traffic and Transportation Adversary Committee, and they are, you know, paying all the taxes for all public schools, libraries, police, fire department, and most of, many of them own business, yet they have no say in Select Winchester leadership on voting on local policies or on the local tax. They must pay directly or indirectly. I still remember very vividly that seven, eight years ago, that many people, non-citizens, they worked really hard, tried to get our high school, Winchester High School, rebuild, override pass, and they volunteered their time talking to neighbors, making phone calls, holding signs, and then many of them were not able to vote because they were not citizens. So I think that they are going to be thrilled that these, you know, very engaged residents, you know, can participate in our local town elections. So therefore, we respectfully request that you recommend this warrant for passage at Winchester's next town meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, Wei. Karen, are there questions or comments from members of the Select Board? As I mentioned, this would be something that probably would, would fit in very nicely to our ongoing Charter review, which will be then presented to Fall Town Meeting. It doesn't necessarily mean it will be a part of that. Could be an independent and separate warrant for town meeting, but we will miss this, this town meeting, well, we'll miss this election period. So it makes sense for us to take a little bit more time and have some public conversation about it and prepare it for the fall, but happy to take any questions now or any comments. Jump in.
So Mike, it, just to, so we all understand the process, I guess this, we would be asking for legislature to allow us to do this? Is that how it works?
That's, that's right. I mean, we, we take a vote, and I think there's still some question of whether or not there's legislative authority for us to do this or not, and Wei and Karen certainly correct me. I know that Town Council's been kind of contributing to the conversation on this, but it's something that will, will take a bit of time for us and hasn't necessarily been all worked out at the state level. But Wei, I don't know if you wanted to comment there?
But yes, based on our understanding that once this article passed our, in our town meeting, then we'll have to wait at the state legislation to pass it, and hopefully that once that, that law passes and our town become immediately effective with a non-citizen voting in local elections.
Okay, so we would, we would, town meeting would vote first, and then it would be subject to the legislature allowing us to do that?
That's correct. And I also would like to add that a number, number of neighboring towns like, such as Arlington, Newton, and Brookline, they all passed similar bylaws in the past few years.
This is a home rule issue, so until, until, unless the state passes the law to the same, to the same extent, or lets us do it, then this would not actually be able to go into effect.
Okay.
But we think it's, it's really, A, it's just an important symbolic measure, and B, if, if and when the law were to pass at the state level, then it would go into effect in Winchester. And C, we're hoping that it would, you know, get the ball rolling in other neighboring towns to make it more, you know, to, to give pressure to the state-level legislation.
It does seem like it's gaining traction as well. So, you know, any other communities that continue to consider this as Winchester is, I think it would help to move the ball forward, something that's really essential and important. So thank you so much, Wei and Karen and the network. Are there other questions or comments? Mariano?
Yeah, so this doesn't require a charter change, right? So it would be a home rule petition from town meeting, and then the legislature would do special legislation? Is that right?
Yes, that would be it unless there was statewide, you know, legislation, enabling legislation that preempted.
Local option?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm just trying to figure out the timing. If there is a charter change, that would affect the timing. Just, you know, I just want to say I completely support it, right? I mean, before the United States was formed, the, the idea of no taxation without representation was, was seminal to the, to, to the American Revolution, and, you know, anybody who resides in Winchester, regardless of citizenship status, pays the same taxes and participates equally on, on civic life. So I think that voting based on that for local elections makes sense. It does. Our, our local elections are not at all like national elections. You know, at the national level, a citizen, even if they move out of the country, they retain citizenship, and they still have to pay federal taxes, even if they don't live in the United States and, and still get to vote. A resident of Winchester who moves out of Winchester doesn't have to pay Winchester taxes, doesn't have, doesn't get to vote in local elections. So to me, it completely makes sense that voting be based on residency for the local elections, and I absolutely support this.
Great. Thanks, Mariano. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think I have a lot. I have a few questions. I think it's probably not the right time to ask them at this point. I think that there's, we have some more time to discuss this, and I think it'll probably, you know, we'll have opportunities for conversation about this. But I think to Mariana's point, I think that one thing I'd love to, to kind of discover is, is tax, is status of taxpayer. So you are a taxpayer in Winchester. Is that the threshold? And I think that that's something that we can continue to discuss because I think that makes a lot of sense. So I have questions particularly around some of the logistics, around who, you know, which documented non-citizens are you thinking about, permanent or temporary? Are you thinking, how will this sort of be rolled out logistically? I think there's some questions that I have there. So again, I think that there's probably a lot of opportunities to further discuss this, but I just wanted to have, I do have some questions that I think will, over time, be answered. Karen?
No, Karen or Wei, if you wanted to answer, I think part of our process will, as we're doing the Charter review, makes sense to move in a parallel track there because the Town Clerk is a major part of that and would be a major part of this process as well, and certainly Town Council has experience with this as well and can, can contribute. But Karen or Wei, I didn't know if you had additional comments?
Well, I would just like to say that we are, you know, we would obviously like the legislation to be as comprehensive and inclusive as possible. That said, we, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the political issues and, and would be willing to take the Select Board's views into account and come up with language. and come up with language that was mutually acceptable. So, yeah, so that's what I would say. I don't know if Wei, you have any, any thoughts?
No, I think that's what you said is perfect.
Okay.
Great, well, we'll be happy to have you work with us, you know, as we move forward and get some answers to some of these questions. I know the town clerk was doing a lot of research as well as town council. So happy to help move it forward. Seems like it's the consensus of the board that this is a good thing and we should keep, keep moving towards it. So if there are any additional comments, say thank you to Wei and Karen and the Network for Social Justice for bringing this in front of us and we'll, we'll keep moving forward with it.
Thank you and thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the mental health statement. Lisa, I think there was a, a draft there. I'm not sure if you have it handy.
Yep, and Amy, I'm not sure if you want to also give some updates or context to this as well?
Sorry, yeah, I think this is something that the Board of Health, in addition to some other community members, that is, you know, clearly this is an important issue in town and it's just getting heightened by the pandemic. And so we felt really strongly that it's important to put out a statement, which will be the first step of, you know, really rolling out a comprehensive, comprehensive initiatives to really address the mental health crisis that we're facing here in Winchester. So bless you, Lisa. So this is just, this is what we, we are hoping Board of Health, I believe Lisa approved this at their last meeting. And so we're asking that the select board approve this as well.
Thanks, Amy and Lisa and certainly Board of Health for being the catalyst to, to this statement, which is really going to lead us to really a, a much more in-depth engagement of our mental health needs and demands in the community, whether it be with the Council on Aging, the Police Department, the schools, Board of Health. So it's really a way for us to kind of break down those silos and move forward to bring more resources to Winchester to respond to the needs that we see in the community, which, which are great. And it's not just pandemic related. These are existing prior to the pandemic and will exist at greater levels certainly after. So thank you for pushing this forward. And I happy to take a motion to approve the mental health statement. Obviously, this is kind of a living document, right? It's going to kind of change over time and kind of write it like our human rights statement is a statement of values, but something that's certainly we're going to add to and make changes to over periods of time. So thank you. Any other comments from members of the board?
The only thing I would say is that I think it's, it's important for us to sort of articulate this and to begin to remove the stigma and shame and awkwardness around this topic. And, you know, Mike Day puts it really well when he talks about this, that we should respect and take care of everything. The health needs above the neck as, as well as below the neck. You know, your, your brain and your, and your psychological state and your mental health are just part of life. And I think it's important for us to work with the Board of Health to recognize that and support that within our town. So I move that we adopt the Winchester Statement on Mental and Emotional Health as presented.
Thank you.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work that went into that, appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is the eviction resolution. Not sure if we had that handy, but I think it was in our packet. So this started off as kind of a request from the local chapter of the NAACP for us to really employ a eviction moratorium, which we've seen at the federal and state level. But, you know, there's issues with our authority at the local level. So I think that we were looking for a resolution to encourage any sort of property owner or any dispute with tenants to really take a step back and, and work with us and to work with the tenants and local social service agencies to, to, to find some common ground to, to hold off an eviction during this difficult time. So I think one, one thing that I, that I will say is that we discussed this with, at the Housing Partnership Board either night and there seemed to be a, a real interest in providing this to landlords and tenants, but also to provide information along with it that connects both landlords and tenants to in, uh, social service agencies or anyone that would, would help really stave off the eviction process. So I know just from my experience in practice, there's, there's a lot of aid that's out there right now to help tenants stay in their homes and support them. And I hope that we can do the same by connecting them to what's available at the local level and state level because it does seem like there are some resources there and, and hopefully more to come at the federal level. So that was, that was really the, the, the comments that came from the Housing Partnership Board. But happy to take other comments or suggestions or move it to a vote.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So do we, these resources that we're talking about, are they available to citizens and landlords of Winchester on the Winchester website or anywhere that we can sort of cohesively get those out to people? Because I think it's a great, it's a great thought and I think I'll feel much more, I mean, I think this is perfect and I, I'm in total support. But I do think it would be helpful to have that list available to people because it can be pretty, pretty tenuous trying to find resources. So I don't know if Lisa, that exists or if that's something that we could put together to provide on our website?
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that outreach is important, you know, it's for, for tenants and landlords. You know, a lot of the situations that we've seen with people that have been out of work since the beginning of the pandemic, it's not necessarily a, a giant corporation. It's always, you know, a landlord in these settings. Sometimes it's someone with just a two family home that's, you know, needs to pay their mortgage off of that rental income. And if they can't, then it's, it's a hardship for everyone involved. So the more we can connect them to existing resources, the, the better. And it's, it's also why we, you know, wanted to shift this from the moratorium language to a resolution. We're really urging the parties to come together and work with us and extend our hand as well to, to come to a resolution. Because, you know, if tenants rely on sort of a moratorium language and they don't pay rent, well, you know, we, we don't, we don't necessarily have the authority to, to protect them in that place. So we want to lend a hand if we can and connect them to resources. And so I think that's the goal of this, so. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the Town of Winchester Emergency Resolution Regarding Evictions.
So I move that we approve the Town of Winchester Emergency Resolution Regarding Evictions as presented.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you, everyone, for the work on that.
If I can just make a quick comment, I've heard on the news that the Biden administration has extended the federal eviction, I think it is called the moratorium, through June. However, I haven't found that and confirmed anything like official from the CDC.
I think that was disclosures that they extended it to.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure if it was rentals, but it's a good question to ask. And, you know, certainly it's, I know it was initially extended by the Biden administration, but, you know, we're still kind of in that precarious time period where we just, we just don't know. And tenants don't know, so.
So that would be like also information if we could locate that to put out there. Will we find it?
Yeah, when we find it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, great suggestion, yeah, thank you, Susan. And we also, Lisa, had we appropriately approved the money for ephemera at our last meeting? Or do we need to do that again or?
We approved the money, but actually not the, the funding source because it comes from the hospital pilot program. And I, we actually need a vote specifying that.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve an extension of the ephemera contract with the Town of Winchester for $2,400 coming from the hospital gift account. Does that sound appropriate?
Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, motion carries unanimously four to zero. And we have under the consent agenda a staging permit as well. Any questions or comments?
I just had a quick question that I didn't see anything about insurance on there, but I guess that's being checked into. Doesn't sound like a big, big project, but I just didn't see that.
Yes, they do have to, we are getting it from them.
Okay. So I, I guess I move to approve the staging permit under the consent agenda for Signorama Somerville for James Cabino at 41 Thompson Street to install the new sign in the existing brackets.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote, Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And yes for me, motion carries unanimously four to zero. Any other questions or comments? I think that we got through most of the agenda here, is that right? Has anybody seen anything that we missed or was there anything supplemental? No?
I mean, there was a town manager's report, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, you know, and I.
I just wanted, just wanted to remind folks that March 10th at 8:00 PM is a deadline to register to vote in Winchester. If you're not currently registered here, if you want to vote in the March 30th election. And actually, we have, just before this meeting, we finalized the contract with Project Beacon. So I'll be reviewing that and probably signing, signing that contract after this meeting. But that's to purchase COVID testing kits for $28.50 per test. That's not including labor. So since we finalized a contract, we'll be setting and announcing the dates for those clinics soon. Since we last met, we had actually announced that we were moving forward with vaccination clinics when we thought that the state was going to be distributing vaccines locally. Last week, the state changed direction and they have since planned to focus on mass vaccination sites. So unfortunately, we won't be hosting our local clinic this week. We have made arrangements to have future clinics at the Jenk Center and we're hopeful that when the vaccination, when, when more vaccinations come in and they increase in numbers, the state will reconsider and have us be able to hold more local clinics. But in the meantime, our public health nurse has been pretty busy vaccinating homebound residents. As you can imagine, that's a, you know, pretty time consuming effort, but something that's really important and something we'll continue to do. The MBTA, Angel went through that, but just a reminder that if you want to register, or not register, but if you want to find the Zoom link for the, the info meeting through our night, you can go to MBTA.com/WinchesterStation. There's also context on that page on where to send emails, the hotline to call. So a lot of other information on that website. We're also reviewing the parking impacts of both the short-term demo project and the long-term project. And we'll be making recommendations after that review. The Waterfield Lot, we're reviewing a draft LDA, land disposition agreement that will be coming down the pipeline to the select board. We're working with representatives from various town committees to review that. Civico has recently reached out to provide or to perform site borings of the site. There's actually a few hoops they need to jump through in order to do that. So we're working with them on that effort. And then there are two pages of project updates that I'm not going to go into, but this is provided by the engineering department. Special thank you to Meg White for not only just putting this list together, but also just managing all these projects. So let me know if you have any questions, but we'll, we'll post this, this update up.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, jump in, yeah, please.
Yeah. Lisa, on the, on the voting, I saw something that we're going to have a vote by mail for the town election, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and like what's the process for somebody to request a ballot?
On the town website, there is an application process that you can fill out to be able to do that. And then people can either fax that, scan it, email it to us. They can actually take a picture on their phone of the application and, and send that to us. They can also drop it off at one of the town boxes in front of town hall.
Well, thank you and the town clerk's office for setting that up. My other question was on the Waterfield Lot, the borings. Are they going to be testing for contamination? And if they do, who's responsible if they find any contamination or who's responsible for cleanup?
Yeah, so that's one of the questions that we have asked them, what specifically they're going to be looking at and testing for. And they're going to be putting together a plan of exactly where they're going to be doing those testing sites. In the current MOU that we have, it does outline a process where if they, if they do work, then at, at, and it's under their control, which is, is not currently now, that they would, you know, they basically would take care of anything that, to a certain extent. So that hasn't really been sorted out and that's one of the things that we need to sort out for here is, is, you know, they don't have site control just yet. They just have an MOU.
Okay. My, my other question was on, on the Winter Pond and Eversource. I saw something about preparation for summer implementation. So are, are we looking at, is Eversource going to be done in that area by, by this summer, hopefully?
That is a good question. You know, I will say that Eversource has not been on time in their prior projects, so we'll certainly get a, a better update when it gets closer.
So one thing is maybe, maybe we can, for a future meeting, I, I know we did this last summer since we had so many projects going on in the town center that we had a plan and like we had a map of where things were closed and like people could find out like when something would be closed. I think we're going to have quite a bit of construction this summer as well, like probably Winter Pond might be the, that road, Woodside Road might be closed for a bit. And that's, you know, that a lot of people use that to get from, what is it, Pond? Like I always forget which one's Pond and which one's Lake. I think that's Pond.
I think it's Pond.
Yeah. There's bridges that are going to be being built, so it might make sense to refresh the, what we did for last summer and, and have that because I know like I have a lot of questions about, you know, how am I going to get to the other side of town?
No, that makes sense.
And I think Tool is working on that to kind of update that plan. It's been just as all these are coming together, especially we're going to start the Swan Street Culver project and as you mentioned, Lake Street Bridge, and there's going to only be so many ways to get around. So I think that we'll have more of a comprehensive plan of what's starting when because over the summer, there's going to be a, a lot of activity of kind of three to six month projects. So that's, you know, so there'll be some traffic decisions that we have to make for rerouting people. And but probably just best on foot for you, Mariano, from this, this point forward, so.
Maybe I can get a very large drone.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye out for it, but thanks. Did you have other questions, Mariano?
Uh, no, that was it.
And I just want to say thank you to, to the, the Health Department because it's been a lot of stopping and starting there on the vaccination clinics. Really takes a lot for a, a small town like Winchester to ramp up and provide resources that are safe during a pandemic for seniors and really high priority residents. And to, to work with the state, we were working with multiple communities around us in order to kind of pull these vaccinations together and distribute them. So for that to be kind of the, the rug to be pulled out from under us at the, from the state level is just really unacceptable. So. at the, from the state level is just really unacceptable. So I appreciate all the work the Health Department has done and I hope that our residents can find access to the vaccines that they need in due time. I know that there are a lot more coming in the pipeline, but it's been delayed quite a bit. So hopefully, we're, we're, we're ready to go at the local level and Jen Murphy and the Health Department have been doing a great job. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? Anyway, okay, now we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
And I see Jackie just popped in.
I know, I know. This is such terrible timing. Sorry, but I guess I, I vote yes also.
Yeah, well, it's, it's either terrible timing or good timing, depending on how you look at it. I mean, it's a pretty good move. I like it.
Sorry about that. And I like your background.
Uh, thank you. Yeah. It's, so thank you, everyone. And I, I think we got unanimous vote there, 5-0 to adjourn, and we'll see everyone soon. Thank you, Windcamp.
Okay, it's, sorry, guys. Take care. Bye. Thanks, Mike. Bye.
Bye. Take care. Meeting is adjourned. Take care. Meeting is adjourned.
Peter made chief and then chief, then he made me his second in command and once again, I learned so much from him. But I really just wanted to give a big thank you to Peter McDonald, because you don't just get to be police chief without some support and guidance and Peter did give me that. So thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to my friends for all the support they've given me. I'd like to say thank you to the community. We've had a tough year and there's been a lot of ups and downs, more downs this past year and it really, I speak for the whole department when I say the letters that have been sent, the food that's been sent, the food that's been sent and the coffee. It really has, just the outreach to us has been great. We really do appreciate it. But once again, you don't get to be in this position that I am with this opportunity through just hard work alone. And that's where I have to thank my family and my wife Jennifer for all the time she put up with. Three o'clock phone calls at night, missing birthday parties, making three hours of a holiday. I know it's been a lot, but you don't get to where you are without the support and I truly appreciate that. I love you guys for that. I thank you for that. Finally, to the Police Department and the community, I'm ready for the challenge. Peter McDonald, as like I had said prior, had done a lot of work with accreditation. We've gone through three accreditations now. We've been accredited for close to a decade. We have our fourth accreditation coming up very soon and we should be reaccredited by the new fiscal year in July. The the new Criminal Justice Reform Bill that was just passed also has a lot of new changes, regulations, a lot of new things for the Police Department that are coming down the road, most of them right around the new fiscal year. So we're gonna be prepared for those, we're gonna be ready for those and along with all the other training that we have to do. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you once again to the Town Manager Lisa Wong, to the board, to the community, my friends and mostly my family. Thank you very much.